All right, so here's all the financials, so I can pull it up.
Are we on? All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's June 17th, 2021, at, I've got 6:00 PM. And this is a regular council meeting of the City of Ivanhoe. I'd like to call the meeting to order and report that there is a full quorum this evening, and we do have our city attorney present. I have invited Chuck Vanderland to do the invocation for us, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Chuck?
Thank you, Mayor. If you'll pray with me, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for all these people that are interested in their city. The people that work so hard to make it a better city. We ask that you bless all of them, bless all the people that are here, get everyone back home safe and sound. Bless our marshals and deputies, keep them safe. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is, were there any people, did anyone sign up for communications from the audience? Okay, being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Okay, Mayor, the special meeting June 5th minutes and the town hall meeting June 5th minutes, still in process, it's not finished, I'm just not quick, uh, finished quickly.
Okay, that, we're going to pull the minutes of the special meeting and the minutes of the town hall meeting from the consent agenda. Is there anything else? Is there any objection to the, uh, the adoption of the consent agenda items? There being none, the consent agenda is approved, adopted. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda, Andrew Business Solutions presentation. This is Mrs. Shirley Andrew. And C.D., you might, you might introduce her.
Lean in, can you hear me?
Can, can she be heard?
I don't think it's on.
It's on.
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Just barely.
Okay. Sorry, guys. Well, I can talk loud, but do I need just to speak into the mic?
Yeah, go ahead and talk loud.
All right.
Thank you.
We are Andrew Business Solutions, and we have been in business for 20 years. And in January, I got the opportunity to come and assist C.D. with the accounting and so on. With Andrew Business Solutions, you get two for the price of one. I am the degreed accountant, and John is?
I'm an enrolled agent. The specific term is IRS special enrolled agent, but they didn't give me a badge, so I'm not going to take anybody to the podium.
So, what that means is he can represent you before the IRS. He's just a little bit below a CPA. I am a, I am a CPA candidate, but not a CPA yet. We've been in business 10 years here and 10 years in California, and so we've been doing this quite a while. And so we're excited to have you guys as clients. And one of the things that we're doing, we're working closely with your auditor to get reports that she needs and make sure QuickBooks can give those reports to her. So you might see a few changes on your reports as we go forward, but we're going to try to keep it as minimal as possible, so your reports stay clearly the same. Are there any questions for us or anything?
Anytime. Yeah, help, we don't understand.
Welcome.
Thank you, good to be on board, so.
Thank you.
Stay? You want to stay, you want to go sit?
Is that it? Nobody has any questions for Shirley?
Yeah, we're, I think we're going to be together, is that correct?
Oh, okay. Okay, we're gonna, item number two is consider for discussion action financial report. They're going to do a, a report together. There you go.
Tag team, all right.
Okay, counsel and mayor, we kind of moved this up from later in the agenda, so that the Andrews can go ahead and head on back home before it gets dark. And again, I do appreciate Shirley and John for stepping up when they did. As I've mentioned to the council, and it's been pretty much known for a while now, that our former accountant basically retired, health issues and other things brought that. And so we did a mad scramble to try to find somebody to fill that role, and thankfully, we did. Now, it's meant a little bit of a change, and with change, there's a little bit of pain that's involved in getting used to something new. But moving to QuickBooks Online has made life easier, I know it will, when we go forward with the annual audit. And that's something that Pam from Davis Heinemann and Company had mentioned and talked about, and then supplied a 44-page document that Shirley's working through to make sure that all of the reports that the auditor needs will be available when, when the audit takes place.
In other words, we don't pay her enough. That's a huge job, Shirley, thank you.
That's true, absolutely.
Well, I wasn't expecting the 44 pages, but we're, we're going to tackle it.
Real quick, I wanted to say something, the sales tax, before we get over to the, the actual financial part. But on the sales tax for June, we received $6,613, a little, a few cents there. That's down somewhat from our May high of $78,000, $7,848. But altogether, for the year to date, we've received $59,028 in sales tax, which goes a long way on the budget for us to be able to meet that budget at the end of the year, especially considering the price of materials and stuff has gone up a lot. Okay, that being said, we'll move over to the, the financial report, the documents there. And we're going to go through this as, as it was paper clipped for you, with the balance sheet first. And I'm going to let Ms. Andrews go over that, so that you know what that balance sheet actually, the information that it provides for the council.
Now, do y'all go line by line? Is that what you do?
No, just give a summary.
I was going to say, we'd be here a long time. Um, you're, the balance sheet is, is, is what you own and what you owe. That's what the balance sheet tells us. And so on the asset side, you have your fund accounts, your bank accounts, and then, of course, receivables and those kind of different things on your first sheet. Is there anything specific that you would like to ask about the balance sheet on the front?
Counsel, this is your grand opportunity. You have the account you're to talk to, and we have a fairly short agenda.
Okay, one question. Property tax receivable is $182,000 plus, and other receivables minus $316,000.
Now, that, I'm sorry, I cannot answer, because I do not know.
Oh, the property tax receivables, um, under the other current assets, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, it's under total bank accounts.
Yes, it is. Well, it's under, it's under other current assets.
Right, other, yes.
Yes, sir.
Those are uncollected taxes at this point, as of the end of May.
Okay. I thought it was something like that, but I wasn't sure.
We refer to them now, since we're past the end of January, as delinquent taxes.
That I could have understood.
We need to get the language right.
That ties into the $134,000, the negative $134,000.
Um, let's see, where are we?
That is, that is, it's the negative 316, it's 22116.
On the other receivables?
Yes, the negative 130 is just the total of those two together.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And what is the 316,000 that's negative? What is that?
The delinquent taxes.
Delinquent taxes?
Yes, sir.
Remember now, it's showing assets, but that's the negative against that asset.
Okay.
All right, then we'll move to the budget versus actual, and this is what we pretty much live and die on, because it shows where we stand for the current month in the year. Actually, the way that Shirley has put this together, it shows the month as the first columns there, and then the, the budget and where we stand at this point in the, the year to date. So as you said, for example, the current year tax, since there was a budget of $463,394, we've collected 95.15% of that budget at this point.
Really, we've, we've gotten 95%?
Uh, yeah, yes. I, I think I noticed an error. There's a column missing.
Oh, okay, yeah, there is.
Yes, so you can't see, you see the budget, but you don't see the total, and I apologize for that, so sorry. But yes, you have collected 95%.
What is the caption for the missing column?
That would be the amount, uh,
That would be your actual, your actual for year to date, yes, sir. And I can send a revised, and he can get that out to you guys. I'm, I apologize for that. I was doing it very quickly. I have to bring this into a spreadsheet and then make everything, hide everything, and I hid the wrong column. So.
Yeah, she's doing basically what it took me most of a day before to do in order to get this pulled together. So. Going through the, the budget real quick, that part is going to be, of course, our income amount. And when you look at that 113.57% of the budget, as far as collection rates, I, we've not quite made budgets yet, from what I, from what I've been able to tell. We're going to have to look at that. But what's happened here is we're also including the court income, which is kind of a standard law deal. So that is, might be what has.
Should they, should they be separated?
Yeah, we'll talk with that, about that a little bit later.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Because.
And your grant proceeds are in there as well?
Yeah. Okay, moving on to expenses, and if you have a question, we'll come back to it. Expenses, it breaks it down. Now, what you're seeing is a reference as compared to the budget line item that Shirley put into the QuickBooks Online. And so it reflects, again, we're missing that one line on the year to date. But if you look at the percent of budget, where we stand on each particular item or line item that would be in the budget, it gives a reflection of that. That's part of what Pam has asked Shirley to do. We're starting to designate, like, Mayor, in the budget, you had broken it down to operations, public works, municipal courts, things like that. That's, that's being worked into this, this form as well.
Oh, got you, thank you.
It goes into a little bit more detail, like the clerical assistant, rather than just office staffing.
And ways, what she wants me to prepare for, for her, and you may want it as well, is where this will actually include column by column each fund. So you'll see all of the activity within each fund. So that's what we're working on.
And the wonderful thing about Shirley is that I can text her, email her, or call, and she is almost immediately there. There's been very few occasions that I've, I've called and she's not answered by then, and it was usually because she was in a meeting or training. But a simple text to her, and she'll respond within just a minute or two. Okay, we're going to move on to the profit and loss part. And again, this is from May, and so it gives you the actual expenditures, income and expenditures, which is a reflection of what shows up in that budget sheet. These are the same forms that you've had the last several months, but now's an opportunity. If you've had any questions and you were hesitant about asking me about, Shirley can handle that.
Because what we did when we inputted your budget for this current year, we made sure that what, what was tied to that budget is under that. So under operations or office, so whatever budget is there. So every, all the expenses are going against the correct budget. Thank you.
The fund activity, or fund account activity, and this is a snapshot of each of the 10 accounts that the city has. The six at Citizen State Bank, and the four with Texas Class. And you got to meet Tony Sikali, well, John wasn't here last month, but Mr. Sikali is our representative at Texas Class. And we're so thankful to, to be able to have them providing a resource for the city, because we did get a little bit better interest. Even at the low point, we're still way ahead of where the bank interest rates are on farms. And those funds are protected, because it's all government investments. Tying into that fund account activity, there's the next several sheets, the reconciliation report. And this is where Shirley makes sure that all of the, the income is posted with the bank. Or if there's a transfer or something over to Texas Class or Fund Texas Class, well, and that's where that takes place, and it shows up in the reconciliation report. Most everybody's familiar with reconciliations on their bank account. So that's basically what we're doing for the city's funds. I'm not rushing the council at all, because while we have a resource here, put it to use.
Clear, I can understand it.
Great.
All right.
It's just that in, in the past, it's been a four-page spreadsheet. This breaks it down like a page per account.
Which makes it a whole lot easier to read, because you know, one page at a time. It covers everything on that category.
Yes.
And one of the things that I'm very careful with is that the numbers come out of QuickBooks Online. There, I don't manipulate the numbers. On that other one, I just hide columns. I don't change any of the numbers, those kind of things. And that way, you're getting what's in your system.
Anything else? Any questions, counsel?
As I get more familiar with QuickBooks Online, there's things that I clarify with Shirley as we go forward. And what I think would make things a little bit simpler or more easy to understand for counsel. And again, we're, we're developing some of these things as we go, because they're specific accounts that are proprietary for the city that Shirley hasn't dealt with, and so we get that clarified. And we know that going forward, that when we come to the end of the year, and then we turn to Davis Heinemann, or if we go out for another accounting firm, that it's not going to be something that, oh, wow, we start from scratch. And one thing that I do, I am appreciative, another thing that is, that I'm appreciative with Shirley, is she took this on after we'd already been three months into a budget year. So she had to go back and kind of build those three months into QuickBooks Online, because we'd been using QuickBooks Desktop.
Yep. Well, that's going to, I think the way we do, do the budget this year is going to have to be different.
We're going to have to incorporate.
I need training.
More money in it, yes.
Yeah, but thank you, Shirley, this is wonderful. Any other comments or questions? Really appreciate you coming here, and we're so glad we found you.
Well, just let me know if there's anything that you would like to see, and C.D. and I can put it together for you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you, Shirley. And John, y'all have site travels?
So we'll get a corrected copy of this?
Yes, sir. As Shirley noted, we'll get the, the one that has the year-to-date copy.
The actuals?
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll make that motion.
I'd like to postpone that motion until we get a corrected copy.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Is that okay? We go ahead and postpone the, the vote on the financial report until we get, till our next meeting, so that we can have the full.
I'll second that.
Well.
I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, we have to, probably, yeah, Tommy's withdrawing his motion, and Will, you're making a motion that we go ahead and wait. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. DPS presentation on new laws pertaining to golf carts, ATVs, and utility vehicles. This was something that Terry has been trying to line up in the last few months, and we left it on the agenda, just in case it was going to happen. But obviously, it's not, he's not able to be here this evening, so we'll move on to the mayor's report.
I'll say one thing about that, just so that everyone knows. I, I wrote a letter to James White, asking him to, to make a, take a review of having the golf carts able to operate at night with proper lighting. You know, many of us have golf carts, and we go to friends and neighbors and family and stay until after dark on our golf carts.
It happened to me last, a couple weeks ago.
So, you know, just, just to be clear, if anybody else would like to write James White, please do so.
Yeah, at this point, I don't know that James can change the law, but speaking of James White, he's not going to run.
I know.
It's like, oh, my God.
He's, he's got his eyes on something bigger.
Yeah. Anyway, mayor's report. We went out this morning, LJA Engineering came out, and we visited the three sites where the bond work is going to be done, the, the grant work, the 11 and a half million dollars. And that was very fruitful. They brought out the engineers. They're actually going to be doing the designing, and they brought out the geotech people that are going to be doing the bore samples and all of that. And so we were out there for several hours this morning, looking at, at the sites, and it was very beneficial. Bond work, we're, you know, we haven't gone out for bid yet on the bond work. We're still waiting for engine, the final engineering guidelines to be able to go on out, go on out for bid. And what we decided, well, and then Texas Water Development Board, we got all these things going on. So we talked this morning about the necessity for a special meeting. I would like to call a special meeting for Monday, the 28th. We couldn't do it next, they would have liked to have done it next week, but since we have a garage sale in here, it really won't work to have a meeting. So Monday, the 28th at 4:00 PM, can you make it? Okay. Monday at 4:00, and Dawn and Victoria will both be here. We will address, and I'm hoping to make this kind of like a association and city meeting, so we can talk about, because the association is involved with, with equi, land acquisition and everything. So if we can call it for both entities to be here, that's Monday, the 28th at 4:00 PM, okay? And we'll be addressing everything going on, because there's going to be adjustments in the Texas Water Development Board project. There's also, you know, with, with this other award, it's like we may change the scheduling of our bond work. You know, what part are we going to do now, what part are we going to hold off on? So it's real important that we have this special meeting. I heard a report from Lonnie Hunt at DebtCog this morning, and he said that, you know, there's supposed to be $69 million that I've been talking about coming to DebtCog, and out of that, $11 million was going to come to Tyler County. And this morning, in the meeting that, that I attended online, he said that there's going to be more. So I don't know, but that, that's kind of good news. We're working on what kind of projects we can come up with, with our portion of Tyler County's money, because I'm sure we're going to get a portion of that. And so we're looking at, at, at possible projects. That's one of the things, when, when we finished our town hall meeting, we took Dawn and Jill out for lunch, and Skip and Tommy were able to go, and, and it was real interesting talking to them about projects and what projects are, C.D., I'm thinking of the word, like viable projects, because they're, they have to fit within certain guidelines. And so it, it's real interesting, the possibilities that we can come up with, and that's, we'll have further discussion about that. There's also going to be a second round of GLO funding, and we're, that's another thing that we were talking about. There's, there's, and they said, I thought that once you'd received money, like this big grant, that then you lose points on the next round. But according to what they said, you still, they don't take off points for having received money. So if that's the case, we're still way up there in points. And so, you know, they said there's a real strong possibility of a project, you know, being, being approved because of the high points we get. So that's really cool. The American Recovery Fund, this is like the second round of that COVID coronavirus relief fund. There's money that's available also. It's $313,000 that Ivanhoe would be eligible for. We haven't determined yet what type of things qualify. That's still not real clear, but that's something else that we're going after. There's all kinds of different pools of money out there. We're working on it. And I want to let you know, they're working on the detour around Lake Ivanhoe. And I don't know if any of you have been up on Mill Creek in the past and seen how bad it was, but I'll tell you, you go up there now, and they have done an amazing job between Ivanhoe Drive East and Ivanhoe Drive West with rebuilding, well, they replaced that big culvert that was washed out. And that actually will be charging to the 2015 flood. That was part of that, that was one of the sites that, that needed to be replaced. And so we will, we will get a 75% reimbursement on that part, getting that culvert in. But they are doing an amazing job. They, David told me this afternoon that he plans on by, by, in the next two weeks, they're going to work on Ivanhoe East and Ivanhoe West. And they'll have the belly dump trucks coming in that following week, probably starting on the 6th of July. And that should, he said that should be done within a few, a few days, because they just go so fast. They just. they just go so fast. They just spread that stuff out. So, that detour should be ready the week of July 6th. So, that's pretty exciting, because we have to have that ready for the Water Development Board project to move forward.
So, is there a tentative start date for that project?
Well, that's what we're gonna be talking about on, at our special meeting. We're gonna go over all of that stuff. Okay. That's it for mine. You all got the breakdown of this thing that C.D. sent out, didn't you? Did everybody get this?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, everybody got it. Okay. I've got more copies. And we'll have those available at the special meeting too, so that we can sit down and-
He emailed to us.
Okay.
Here. You have-
I didn't print it all.
Did you have printed copies here? Pass out copies. Okay. Okay, Consider for Discussion Action Supervisor of Dams Report. Rusty, you are on.
Mayor, City Council. It's clean. There's not much going on with the dams right now. Chance Construction has still not told us when they would be here. So, we're still waiting for material to fill in the cracks, mainly along the roadway, and to see how large the void is at the end of Charmaine. And a couple of other places to check, make sure voids aren't there that we found that were sounding hollow but small. So, that's all I have. Little behind on cleaning out vents and weed-eating grass and killing ants and that sort of thing. But that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Rusty, can I add to that, if you don't mind, please? We did get Tristan, Galahad, and Camelot Mode. They've all, they've all been in mode. We got Ocean Breeze, and they did that for us, took it off the road crew, because they just don't have time right now. And then Sarah and I met with the herbicide specialists. We have an issue with parrot feather and bladder work. And what's happening is, it is breaking off out of Galahad and Tristan and getting into Charmaine. He is looking at it, trying to figure out why it's happening. Don't know why. But today, Skip, Marion and Skip, Sarah and I, we got the, did the fish grates, got all off of there. We went to Galahad and got all up underneath Galahad. And this is got, there's so much that's coming over the spillway in Galahad that was gonna start to impede the water coming through underneath. And we got all up underneath, got it all out, and we hauled it off. We had a truckload of, of grass, of this weed. Don't know why, but it's, it's floating. And we encouraged all the residents, if it's floating in front of your docks, to dig it out. And Tyler County collectors will take it.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. So, that's, when we find anything else, we'll put, put it out there. But that's what's going on right now. We're gonna do a test spray Thursday morning and see if we can kill this and get it back under control. But we're gonna do some test spots and see if it's gonna work before they invest a whole lot of money in it. So, we'll have an update on that.
Thanks, Will. And the dams look great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Rusty or for Will? All right. Thank you, Rusty. Appreciate it. A report on municipal court activity. Judge Rader.
Hi, Judge.
Hello. Mayor, City Council. My report is actually for April and May, since I didn't prepare one for last meeting. Total fines in court, can you hear me?
Just barely.
Really? I'll talk louder.
We're gonna get, have to get a shorter podium.
Or a little step stool.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Total fines and court costs collected for the two months, April, May, was two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. The total fines retained by the city was one thousand three hundred and four dollars and thirty-five cents. The court costs sent to the state were, was ele, one thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. I have revised the security, Court Security Committee. We were supposed to meet, but COVID happened and we didn't meet. And this is a committee that is mandated by the state to evaluate, design, and implement security plans and procedures for the safety of the public, the court staff, and municipal staff. The members will be the same. They, they were, it was Terry Riley, Tommy Morris, C.D. and myself. The only change we're making is, well, I'm making two changes. Deputy Marshal Jim Zachary will replace Terry Riley, and I'm gonna include Missy Taylor, because just recently, she attended a virtual court security course. So, I think she will be helpful in doing that. So, we have our meeting will be on June 24th at 2:00. That's all I have. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Report on City Marshal Office Activity. Is there anyone here?
No.
Well, moving right along. Report on Monthly Code Enforcement Activity. Missy Taylor, would you like to give the report?
Mayor, Councilman. Okay, so as of June the 17th, we have one hundred and twelve. I know there's a typo in your packet. It says eleven open cases, but we actually have one hundred and twelve open cases for 2020. We have given five citations for those open cases. Two of the citations are currently in warrant status. So, just, if you have a citation through the Ivanhoe Municipal Court, please come into our office and take care of it. Because when you're in warrant status, you're already accruing more fines. And we would be, you know, the court would be willing to, you know, hear your case and work with you. Okay, so we have eleven open 2021 cases. We currently have four stop-work orders, which is basically, they have not came in, taken care of a permit, or complied with city ordinances. Those four, they're, we're getting ready to go ahead and do a show cause hearing. You know, we've already sent letters. They're not, you know, we're not under compliance right now, so we're gonna be sending show cause hearings. We still have the one abandoned structure down here on Charmaine. We're waiting on estimates for the demo. We still haven't been able to find anybody, I guess because of all the storms, everything else. People just, it's not, we're not getting any cooperation from demo companies. We have seven properties currently in Ivanhoe with non-conforming signs. That means that either they're non-conforming at this moment, they're being sold, and they have to be brought up to current code standards. We do have two show cause hearings scheduled for two pool violations here in Ivanhoe. We have nine OSSF septic violation cases pending from our DR rep. Right now, we have eighty-five junk vehicles. So, we have finalized, we've gotten our stickers, we finalized the process, and we will begin putting code enforcement stickers on your abandoned junked vehicles. And then you will have certain days to comply before the city ends up taking possession and towing them off. So, we're still working towards a better city, one case at a time. Questions?
On the, the structure on Charmaine Drive East, has anybody talked to, Charles Rawson?
Yes. Mm-hmm. That's the, we, we had that case before the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, yeah.
There was given so many days, it was put in the paper, there was no response. So, the city declared it a nuisance.
Okay.
Yes, an abandoned structure. So, now we're just waiting on demo. It is something that our public works could probably do, but right now, they're, you know, they're tied up with more important, you know, road matters. So-
Yeah, they're, they're really concentrating on that detour. That's huge.
Correct. So, we're still working on that one. Maybe if we can get some volunteers, help tear it down, don't know. Call the city with some, you know, ideas or suggestions.
Thank you, Miss.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Missy or, okay, thank you so much.
Just one. When we were talking about junk vehicles, we're also talking about these trailers and RVs. Okay, thank you. So, if they have one, it's okay, they have to have a new title, new insurance, or just a license tag?
Okay, so the eighty-five cases that I have currently are, they're considered junk vehicles by our ordinances, which means they are not currently registered, have tags, or have the City of Ivanhoe tribal trailer sticker in certain districts. So, at this point, there are more out in the city. We have not opened any new cases, because due to COVID and the state of emergency, we were not able to really enforce that. So, now that COVID and the state of emergency is lifted, and you are required now to get your registration and inspections, then the city can move forward with our plans to abate those violations.
And all these eighty-five cases, people have been notified?
Yes, sir. They have been notified more than one time. Yes, sir.
All right. Any, anything else before Missy sits down? Okay. Thank you, Missy. Appreciate it. Next is Public Works Report, and I've pretty much, you know, included everybody in on what's going on. And David's not feeling well, so I told him to stay home. It wasn't that important that he be here. So, prayers up for David. Yeah, well, yeah. We're not sure what it is. Consider for Discussion Action Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations, John Craven. Councilman Craven.
Okay, we've been talking about this ordinance number 2021-9. And the only change that's been suggested to us and put in was on number E, which is on the second page.
Yeah, sixty-four square feet.
Yeah, sixty-four square feet in commercial zoning district, and six square feet in areas in residential zoning district. So, we needed some clarification. We got that, and we put it in.
So, you're changing it from sixty-four square feet to six? Is that what?
That's the recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, because sixty-four square feet is huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a typo, I would think.
Right. Is there a motion to-
I'll make a motion that we accept the changes.
I'll sign it.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Wait a second. Yeah, the change, to approve the change.
I made the motion to approve the change of the ordinance from sixty-four square feet to six square feet.
Okay. And John seconded, C.D. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're good. Good. Moving right, right along. Consider for Discussion Action Inter-local Agreement with Warren ISD for Finalizing CARES Act Funding and Reimbursement. This is something that's, what we, what we did, we didn't have, we had more money than we had need for in the coronavirus relief fund. And so, what we did is we reached out to Warren ISD to see if they had some things that they needed to be reimbursed for, because there was a, there was a part of that, a portion of that that could be done that way. And so, they also put in some things that we're gonna, they're gonna be reimbursed for like sixteen thousand dollars through our coronavirus relief fund. But we have to have this interlocal agreement, which says coronavirus relief fund interlocal agreement between the City of Ivanhoe and Warren ISD. The City of Ivanhoe is in the process of finalizing coronavirus relief fund reimbursement payments to the Warren Independent School District, as allowed by the State of Texas via the Operation Connectivity Program. Before this money can be dispersed, the school must sign and agree to the following. The City of Ivanhoe, as a participant in the CRF CARES Act, has agreed to reimburse Warren ISD a portion of the CRF monies available to the city. This is a reimbursement grant, and the school district is required to provide documentation for reimbursement based on guidelines set by the Texas Department of Emergency Management in conjunction with the agreement arranged with the Texas Department of Education referred to as Operation Connectivity. Once the city has received reimbursement from TIDM, the monies due to Warren ISD will be forwarded to the school district. Should TIDM find that documentation or submitted reimbursement request by the school not be qualified under TIDM guidelines, or does not meet the set criteria of Operation Connectivity, the school agrees to reimburse the city those funds the city paid the school district, so that the city may send them back to TIDM. The school agrees to reimburse the county within twenty days of notification. The school, to reimburse the county. Okay. I've got, okay. Okay, the one that I printed out says county, city.
The school agrees to-
Yeah.
Good catch.
Good catch. Thank you. Okay, so, do I hear a motion to approve the entering into this interlocal agreement with Warren ISD?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions about this?
No, ma'am.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Consider for Action, Discussion Action Update on Status of Over-65 Exemption. I know that last, last meeting, David made a report. You had spoken with David Luther, the county appraiser. I went in to talk to him the other day and asked him if he could print out some different options for us with the different, you know, you can give different amounts of exemptions. So, he's gonna do all kinds of different amounts in the, the way it would affect us as far as budget and everything. So, it, it is in process. When I went in to see him the other day, he was about this deep in papers and, and, you know, protests and all of this stuff. And I told him that it didn't have to have it by Thursday, but he'll be getting it to me very soon. Maybe we can have a report on that at our special meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna lose that momentum, and we do wanna talk about it. Appreciate you putting it on the-
And, and what's our deadline to make this happen, if we make it happen?
You know-
Or is it?
I haven't got the budget, that, that itinerary thing that, in front of me, but we don't have to have our budget finalized by-
Yeah, I would think that the soonest that it could be done would be for next year.
Right, for this upcoming, yeah, it would be for this upcoming-
I would think plenty of time.
I'm just shooting off the hip, but I, I would assume that we would have to have a resolution or something like that, you know, offering that exemption. And that would go in as well with the setting of the tax rate in September. So, we had a little bit of time, but it's good that we're tracking it early.
Right, right. And, yeah, and David Luther is gonna come up.
He was using a number of ten thousand dollar exemption.
You can do five thousand, ten thousand. He's gonna do all these different things.
I thought there was a three thousand threshold and then, but anyway.
So, he'll do the different amounts and, and what that would look like, and, and so we can do some serious discussion about that, because we're gonna have budget workshops too. So, yeah. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Consider for Discussion Action Information Relating to Ontivero's Legal Proceeding. Brad, do you have anything to report on that?
There's not an update on that litigation at this time, but I've been in contact with Frank Calvert, who's the attorney, who TML assigned-
Okay, you need to be closer to my, I guess it's not-
Is it on?
Yeah.
It's on. Can you hear me?
Moving around.
No, there's nothing to update at this time. Nothing, nothing new is happening with that litigation right now. It's kind of still in the early stages. But I've been in contact with Frank Calvert, who TML assigned to handle that claim. And as I receive more information, I'll update- But I've been in contact with Frank Calvert, who TML assigned to handle that claim, and as I receive more information, I'll update the council.
Yeah, we had put it on the agenda in case there was an update, but there isn't at this point. Next on the agenda is communications from the audience. Any other things to come up? Council comments. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. It's gotta be the earliest we've ever had.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, council. We are adjourned at six forty-eight P.M.
It may never happen again.
Very good.
Thank you, everyone.